Fred McCarroll.
Present.
Victorada.
Present.
Doug Avery.
Present.
Angel Lailis.
Present.
Martha Farah.
Present.
And the form.
Okay, let's rise and say we pledge allegiance. Moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the God for which his saints, one nation under God, in the Father, who has given us this world. As this week was Veterans Day, I'd like to remember all the veterans who've lost in war and all the veterans who've lived and give them a special thanks. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Graziano has asked to address his board. So you guys can put your report.
Good afternoon. I want to thank you for the-
My mic's not-
Yes, sir. Good afternoon. I want to thank you for the opportunity to provide an overview of the draft Seneca Falls on the spending plan. The Seneca Falls Development Corporation was established with the sole purpose of strengthening the community with economic development. Earlier this year, the town council adopted the Town of Seneca Falls 2018 Strategic Plan for Economic Development. And the Seneca Falls Development Corporation's role is to simply implement that plan. By March 31 of next year, we will have prioritized specific projects to undertake from the approved economic development plan. And the handouts that I've provided you this afternoon outline the investment needed for the next three years, during which we plan to actively market Seneca Falls. There's several examples taken right from the plan. Creating educational materials about our vision. Developing new media exposure, generating support for various initiatives in the plan. To begin targeted marketing for distribution of the Seneca Falls marketing package. An outreach campaign for colleges. Or creating vacant property lists. There's a number of things that we're going to look at this plan and try to prioritize some good wins and some things that we can accomplish right out of the plan. The second thing we want to do is seek out grants and continue to do that, such as the DRI grant, which we were finalists in. We can pursue some of the Bromfield grants that Auburn has been very successful with, as well as neighborhood housing. We've been talking to the Ithaca Neighborhood Housing Corporation. They're the folks who did Pineview Circle up on 318. And we're in discussion with them now about housing. Our spending plan includes expenditures related to the 2019 or 2020 19th Amendment Hundred Year Celebration, which the Seneca Falls Development Corporation is coordinating with several other organizations. There's no doubt there's a level of uncertainty regarding the tax burden our residents and business owners are facing now and in the near future. Now, more than ever, we need to move forward with economic development. It'll help our existing businesses and attract new ones. It'll broaden and disperse the tax burden by attracting home buyers and developers. And most importantly, it'll unify our town around a common set of projects and goals. It's our collective vision. It's really our way forward. This afternoon, we're simply requesting that you would provide the tools to do the job that you've already decided needs to be done when you pass the plan earlier this year. So that's all I have to say unless there's a question about what I presented.
So what are you requesting, Jerry?
In the funding plan which you have before you, in year one, you'll see as this is broken down, the continued funding of the farmer's market with continued support for that. Most importantly here, economic development personnel or contract, which requires a three-year commitment because what we found, none of the folks that we interviewed a couple of years ago would come with less than a three-year commitment to come on board as economic developers. And whether we use one person to do that or we consider using independent contractors or consultants or marketing firms or a combination of individuals to get the plan implemented, we believe that that's a sufficient amount. Surely all that's needed in that area to cover three years. And that's the $396,000 number. And of course, you have always funded the operating expenses and that's 8,800. So the first year request is $438,970. The second year request, the 2020, it dropped significantly to 4690. And that's because we eliminate the economic developer or the economic development personnel or contract. But we continue, there's also a $30,000 number in the first two years, which is for support of the 2019 or the 2020 19th Amendment Celebration in 2020. And then the third year, the number drops to 15,500. So that's the body of the request.
So... That's a pretty big amount that you're asking for.
Well, it's in accordance with what the board passed to do economic development. I'm sure everybody realizes that it'd be significant. And it's going to take an investment to do what we've decided to do.
Can that be split up over three years?
The problem with splitting it up over three years is again, getting a commitment from a good quality, qualified economic developer is going to take a three-year commitment. No one's going to come who's done this before somewhere else who has a good quality candidate on a one-year commitment. I mean-
I'm not saying one year, but-
Yeah.
If the town was committed to split it up and give you first, second, well, for 19, 20-
Yeah, we discuss any way the board wanted to do it. My only concern is-
You're guaranteed it.
What's that?
If you're guaranteed that for three years.
Yeah. I guess we'd have to do that on a contractual basis only because one board can't bind the following board. My concern would be that if the board is replaced, then we'd have to re-talk about it all over again and start from scratch. And then we've, in good faith, we've negotiated with an economic developer, let's say, and committed three years to them. Now we've got to withdraw. It's not fair to them to have somebody move in the area and take on tasks like this and then say, "Whoops, we couldn't get you the second and third year."
Well, that's what I'm saying. We need a contractual.
Yeah. I think that would work. I don't know that's above my pay grade. I don't know how that would work, but I'm sure there's a way to do it.
I don't know. We can't do that either. I don't know if that part was better.
Otherwise, you'd be asking us to transfer all the money to you and you would hold it and pay the salaries for them?
Yeah, that's what the setup of the Seneca Falls Development Corporation was created for in the first place to do that, so.
I hesitate, and not that I don't support the idea, but I just, we're so late in the budget process and we're going to wrap it up today, I think.
Yeah.
And suddenly, you know, almost a half million dollars, it's hard.
There's other issues that are going on in this town. And it doesn't seem to be too business-friendly. We have a board-appointed board here that's suing the town. We have a company here who I feel this board is being belligerent to, refusing any sort of income from them to proceed in a sound economic future. It seems that this town has become business-unfriendly. And, you know, I don't know how to move ahead when we don't even know what kind of funds we're going to have for the rest of this year and in the years to come. We aren't gaining any more income. And I think a number of people are trying to lose income. Just my opinion.
Right, respectfully, I think that makes the argument to move forward with a vision and a plan to get past where we are. And now more than ever is needed to start thinking about, you know, what are we going to, how are we going to attract young people to stay in the area? How are we going to develop business? How are we going to get our community past where it is right now? The longer we kick this can down the road, I think the harder it's going to be to pick this up and be successful. And what we've outlined there is what we believe is an efficient, successful way to start moving the ball forward based on the economic plan that the board adopted earlier this year. So although we're late in the budget process as far as discussing a number, the board members who have attended the Seneca Falls Development Corporation have known that our role, of course, and we appreciate all the work that's been done by the board, our role, of course, is just to implement a plan that the town said to do. So that's, my position on it, just personally, is I think more than ever, we need a vision to get past where we are. And by the way, I did want to say this on a personal note, too. No matter what side we came down on in some of the harsher or harder issues, I believe that everyone on this board is well-intentioned, hard-working, and has put a ton of hours and time into all the issues. So I just personally, my wife and I would say, "Thank you for your service to the community, regardless of what side you came down on." But now more than ever, I think, just like there's a verse in the Bible that says, "Where there's no vision, the people struggle." And I think that's what we have here. We have no way forward because no one's painted a picture of a real clear vision. You guys did that when you approved this economic development plan. And I think if folks had a copy of this and looked through it, they'd see some tremendous ideas that have been discussed for over 15 years in one way or another. So I think now's the time, you know, with all due respect, now's the time to do it.
How did you come up with the 396, 870?
Uh, well, there is-
Would that be even over the course of the three years? And what I'm thinking, what I'm thinking of is, what if we fund one year of it?
Yeah.
And then if the landfill money does resume, then perhaps to fund the other two outside the budget would be a good use of some of that fund?
Yeah, this was scaled year after year, which included payroll taxes, which gave us the option of hiring someone as an employee. It also included, you know, the support that an economic developer would need. I mean, it's just fully funding the operation of getting this done. And it's, it's, it's not a bare-bones request. I understand that. But it's what we've decided and what we've, as a board, have determined is the blueprint for success. A reduced amount is fine, but, you know, what you're saying over time is fine. If that can be done, but again, I don't know how municipal funding works like that.
So, well, my question is, so a third of that is 132, 290. Is that what you would need to get us moving forward?
Uh, no, I think it's broken up a little bit differently than that.
And that's my question.
Yeah, I can certainly provide that number in short order for you. What the numbers would be, what each year one, year two, and year three would be for that portion.
If you go by a total, 488, 970, it comes out 162, 990.
Yeah. We have, we have funding that we've received from this board that could carry any shortfall. So it's not like we're to the penny here or that we need to get something to the penny because the board has funded us and we've been good stewards of that money and still have some to invest back into this. You know, those who come know the public dollar amount that the board has carried forward. We would waste a nickel on it. So, you know, if it was divided into three, we could manage that. That's not a problem.
So Jerry, this money's to go headhunting to find somebody in the tape, isn't it?
That would be one, that would be one strategy, yeah.
So bring somebody in the town that can say, "Look at the town and..."
Yeah, headhunters tend to be a little expensive, you know, if you have to hire a headhunter to find somebody like that. But, you know, our preference is to have one single person filling that role, but we would consider independent contractors, consultants. We've used Greg Zellers, as those who know has worked incredibly hard and has been very successful in portions of the plan that we've assigned to him. He's done a great job with our website. He's done some terrific marketing. He's done some great grant writing. He's probably responsible for us being finalists in the DRI grant. So Greg would stay on, we retain Greg. But Greg, in his own admission, has said he's not an economic developer. It's a very specific role. Takes a very specific kind of person with the time and the energy and the skill set to do it. And it's, the range in salary goes anywhere from 75,000 to over 100,000 for these, for economic developers.
So that money would be used for an economic development for the SFTZ?
Yes, sir.
Are there any other questions, Mr. Graziano?
Thank you very much. Appreciate you.
We'll come back to this when we talk about the budget.
Yep, okay. You can bring it up. Under all business, the inter-municipal agreement, county, Seneca Falls, Fire, Junius, sewer, IMA agreement of municipal cooperation for wastewater conveyance, treatment, operation, and maintenance for New York State Route 318, Route 414 municipal sewer system. I make a motion. I need a second on this motion.
I'll second that.
Is there discussion? Gentlemen, your honor.
Sure. This, the agreement's been working with the county for several months now. I think back in June, they initially made a presentation to the town sewer committee, as well as the county, on what the agreement included. I think in September, the concept agreement was approved by the board. Basically, what this includes is the new sewer on 318, along with the existing gravel sewer in 414. It provides a formalized agreement between Fire, Seneca Falls, the county, and Junius as far as how any new or existing user would be charged, what the services, what the cost would be to maintain those existing systems. Provisions for the county actually contract with the town Seneca Falls Sewer Department to kind of make, provide maintenance of the existing systems along there. Provides provisions for billing the current out-of-district rates that Seneca Falls has. And there's provisions for connections to new users. There's provisions for providing at least an annual review of how the system's operating. What's the capacity remaining? What are the costs required to operate the system? I mean, there's a lot of provisions in here from the agreement that's fairly lengthy, fairly detailed. But what it really represents is something the county hasn't really done in the past with this. And certainly, the office and the IMA. It provides kind of that for all parties. So these counties obviously can be fair to all. But it's really a, this new sewer that sewer was primarily driven by the county planning department for development, I mean, really to kind of drive, you know, potential development. Certainly, as those developments happen as hoped by the county, there's going to be, you know, there's going to be occupancy of the existing, you know, the capacities out there right now. Starting out, you know, it would include the Junius outlet, the water well amount, and the Junius, I mean, it's Junius pound service area. Those are the two existing users that create the network. It ties down to 414. 414 would include the casino, Junius diner, the petro burned dairy, the, there's, I think, about eight users along 414. So really, it just provides, you know, what's the, how's this system going to maintain? How is, you know, who's going to get paid for it? What's the process for payment? So that's the gist of it, what the agreement entails. The resolution that was provided, I think, earlier this month, really, the way the agreement is detailed, it's a four-party agreement. So there's four signatures on the agreement. So that resolution was to authorize the town supervisor to sign the agreement on behalf of the town board. The original version of the agreement had, I think, 20 some odd signatures with every board member from Junius Fire. That was just not really the best way to do it. So each individual town and the county had an agreement. You know, basically, had the resolution to sign, you know, authorize a member of the board to sign on behalf of the board. And then a similar resolution went in front of the county board last night. I believe that was tabled that I was at the meeting. My understanding is tabled because it's Seneca Falls, kind of, Seneca Falls controls a lot of this, certainly, because it's ultimately the area that's going to be the contract operator and certainly they're the, ultimately, you know, the facility is creating a voice line. So that's really, I think, the county wanted to see how Seneca Falls, you know, reacted. So I think that's really the main driver why it was came last night on the county's end. So I don't hear anything else.
Not really, yeah.
Something else?
You guys, does everybody know Sam Green? He's Commissioner of Seneca County, so.
Joe, do you have anything to add to the operation and maintenance?
We're all set. Guys are trained. We already operate five pumps, exact same pumps in our system. So we're all ready to take care of it. I got guys trained last week at a warm and rough training. So like I said, we're all ready for it.
So under this agreement, the county's going to be consistent with our building as it comes to us?
So the town builds the county and the county basically builds the individual users. That's the intent.
So money's still coming back to us, though?
Oh, yeah. The town would build, the initial bill is the town builds, I mean, actually, the order was the town would build the county and the county would pay the town for that. It's up to the county to administer and distribute. The primary driver behind that is you have within, I'm more on 318, you've got, there's a large capital project. So new users on 318 is part of that, is part of that tie-in. They're going to have to help fund that, which means they'll have to pay with that service. That project was largely funded based on the county that a couple of years ago provided a capital contribution. They got some grant money from Empire State Development because it's primarily a development-driven project. With the through-way authority, the through-way authority is providing some upfront cash to help fund that. So there's, you take the overall project, you deduct that. There's still some money left as far as the project to be funded. That service, as new users come on, will be distributed amongst those users. So that's with the county. Certainly with the operations, the county is responsible for operating that. So ultimately, the county was looking at having to, to send sewer bills out. And then under the earlier version, the town would have sent sewer bills out. So any user on 318 or 414 would have received two different bills from two different entities. Concerned being, it's probably kind of confusing that it potentially, some would pay one bill and not the other. So now with one agency or municipality kind of administering that, it kind of makes things cleaner for primarily also the users along the district. So they're getting one bill as opposed to actually two different bills. So the county, the town basically, it's, the county's on the cost for operations and maintenance and for treatment are, it's a passive. There's no, I mean, there's no transmission fee or anything like that. Sometimes you can, it can happen when you're moving liquid water from one town to the other.
If there was a major concern, break or something, we'd be compensating for the maintenance?
I mean, that's part of this project is, the one thing that's not happening right now, certainly with 414, is this agreement establishes some reserves. So there will be reserves as part of the ongoing funding. There's going to be reserves that are applied to that every year. So now there's some money for, you know, typically administering the, more times not just the ongoing maintenance issues, but there'll be some money established for that.
Okay.
So that's, I mean, really, ultimately, the county's going to own 318 and the 414 sewer. But I mean, one thing with the 414 sewers, there's never been a real firm agreement. And the idea owns it. Each agreement's an individual agreement between the town and the individual user. As far as maintenance, that type, there's never really been an established agreement. This provides, you know, here's some money to go in and maintain that section of 414. To the maintenance, typically inspection, that type of work, but if there's, you know, periodic cleaning and like that. So if there is an issue pending, they, now the town knows it's coming, the county knows it's coming as opposed to, instead of being reactive, more proactive, the ability to be proactive. So the fix before something breaks is a lot cheaper than the fix after something breaks.
So as far as maintenance goes, Joe, will we have like a spare? How many pumps are out there? Will we have like a spare pump?
Six pump stations, two of each. So at least 12.
But I consider, you know, down the road, if a pump goes, are we going to have one spare for the?
Well, typically, in the first couple of years, you're going to be operating under warranty anyways. By the, you know, so there's a very reputable pump manufacturer that you all located. It's the same, it's the same pump, state-of-the-art pumps that's on 414. I think the town has a couple others. But one of them's a smaller manufacturer. They, so everything's on the warranty. They're clearly robust pumps, but again, that's where that, their reserve goes in. So the same thing to be, they're duplex pumps. So the reason behind a duplex pump is typically, something goes down, if a pump dies, you've got the ability to, you know, that second pump is there, that's a reserve. And they basically alternate, the stations are, the maximum flow coming through the pump is by one pump. So it's not a, if we get a little bit more flow, we will have to provide some additional capacity. So each pump is, apparently, there's a backup pump on every station. Every station has an alarm, a dialer, basically. So whenever there's a high-level alarm or something wrong with the pump station, Joe gets the call.
I believe as this goes forward, we should be building a stock with the county of parts. They're all new now.
I understand there's a warranty, but down the road?
Well, there's a reason, so pardon me, I'm sorry, Bill.
So we should be able to build stock parts.
Now, what happens? You get six pumps?
Well, there's, for the 318, there's a six-pump station. Two in each.
So what happens is one has, a pump goes in the middle of those. Say number, the third pump in the middle goes.
Let's say they're both gone and there's no electric. We already have mobile pumps that we can bring out and bypass them.
Okay.
So we already, we established that in the last three years with our system already.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, that's the town's certainly what to handle the emergency situations. And again, a pump, there's more maintenance. Typically, it's not necessarily replacing a full pump. It's a, you know, if there'd be a wear part or a condenser, something like that, and we replace it, lower cost. And within that, the original agreement, I think, that was set out a while ago, has kind of a budget for, here's the only budget for the town. And part of that, but one of the bottom lines there is SLA would be for the trouble of that stuff. That's that $8,000 that would be, the reserve would be set up just to cover up spare parts. Whether or not, what would need to be, I think, one of the challenges of this county, the reserve would be established, whether or not it's actually preparing spare parts or just having that fund available having that fund available to get those materials, you know, if necessary. So after, you know, three or four years, it's going to be a fairly healthy, healthy reserve built on that.
Thank you.
May I ask a question?
Is there any other questions from board members? None. This issue has been talked about for a number of years and we're in the final stages here before we have to move on it. I think people have been working toward this and Santa Capols is equipped to provide his service. I think Joe has adequately prepared for this and I think we're ready to sign this agreement. So are there any more questions to ask? I see none. All in favor of this agreement, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes. And did I hear a 5-0 vote?
I think so.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, gentlemen, and we'll be working closely with you and Joe. I started and T is crossed if there's any more, but this is a pretty detailed agreement. And I'm thinking of proper signatures on it and we'll move ahead.
Thank you.
And thank you for coming. Engineering services, B, for Phase II site work project, make a recommendation that we move ahead on this. So there's a motion on the floor, I need a second.
Second.
Discussion.
Whether we motion or not.
Oh, the Phase II site work project.
To move forward with?
To agree to move forward to?
Engineering services.
Engineering services?
Yeah. And we also have to, we have not picked the engineering services yet. We're working on that?
We're, we're in the process.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, you're in the process. Okay, but we, we still haven't picked the engineering services and we're reviewing the comps that they gave us and I'm going to be sharing that with the board and we'll be moving ahead on that.
So we would be voting to move into that phase?
Yes.
Okay. And we don't have an actual dollar figure yet. You've sent us the comps, I'm taking, once we pick the company or whatever, they'll be able to tell us to feed.
So I make a motion to move forward on that for the engineering services?
Second.
Is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Okay. As I made, make the motion to approve the preliminary budget, I need a second on it for discussion purposes and to move forward.
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion on this?
Yeah, well, this is when we were talking about the IDA, not the IDA, but the Development Corporation.
Yes. Any things?
So I, I, I mean, I don't see how at this point in the process, we can absorb, you know, 488,000. We have, I think, I think there's actually 55 in the budget now.
There's 55.
55. But it seems like this is, this is something we have been talking about for a very long time. So I'd like to see us put some money in. So I think we should go for a third.
Is that a motion of amendment?
Yeah, if that's the way you'd like it. So yeah, I would, I hope that we, do you want an exact dollar figure?
Okay.
I'll second that.
Do you still have a figure?
Still down.
Okay, so the motion would be to amend the preliminary budget in the actual cost of, how much did you say? 132,000?
That would be the, the third, that's the third of just the salary portion.
Okay, so 160 something?
162,990, that's a third of that 488,970.
Okay, so there's an amendment on the floor to modify the preliminary budget by 160, by adding 162,000?
Well, we wouldn't, if you take away the 55, it's already there. We'd be adding 107,990.
107,990.
99, okay. Oh, so that's the motion, you don't want?
I guess that would be my motion, since the 55 is already in there.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
But yeah.
So we're going to modify the budget to add?
107,999 dollars for economic, in the economic development line item.
Why don't you say 162,990 total? Just let it here.
Yeah, 162, but the 55 is already there.
55 is out of there.
That's why I said total, 162,990.
Total of 162,990.
All right, we, we amended to?
162,990.
55,000, right?
Yeah.
So we're either adding that or we're expanding, increasing the other amount to that. Either way, the results will be the same.
In that line item.
But we're adding to the preliminary budget 107,000, 990.
Total will be 162,990 in that line item.
So there's amendment on the floor to, so, well, the amendment, motion to amend, I need a second.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion to amend, second discussion.
Do we have any idea what it's going to do to the tax rate? I mean, I'm for economic development.
I don't think we've ever seen this.
And there's no, I think we have until the 20th to approve the budget. So what's today's date?
14.
14.
We're going to go next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday. So we'll probably want to approve it tonight if possible. I'm not sure how much that would increase the tax rate.
Let's go get that.
Get that, yeah, okay, go get that. I have a big paper to put in my table.
I know, I'll say, oh, what did I forget? When is it recording?
You don't have your foot pedals on there?
No, we don't.
With the, with the $107,000 increase, that would bring the total to 3,922,293. Bev has indicated that would change it from $8.71 per thousand to $8.95 per thousand, total of 24 cents per thousand dollars.
That's the motion on the floor. Second discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
None?
No.
Take a roll call vote, Mrs. Greer.
Okay. Frank Lusaro?
No.
Lou Ferrara?
No.
Dave DeLealess?
Yes.
Seth Leiberman?
Yes.
Luke Barata?
No.
I heard three noes.
Yeah.
Two yeses, motion fails. Under, we're still on the preliminary budget? Is there any discussion on the preliminary budget?
Yes.
Yes.
Do you want to, always want the uniform motion today?
Uh, you can, you can start discussing it and if you need a motion, we can.
Okay, all right.
But then, because we're in discussion phase.
Okay, all right. There's been a lot of talk about, about eliminating the full-time attorney and the full-time IT. This doesn't have budgetary implications immediately, but it's, it's somewhere down the line, down the, might, I would recommend or move if you want, that a committee be formed to look at the IT question and see whether that's best, we're best served by full-time, part-time, but still an employee or contractual. I think after we, we, we had this arrangement for a year, I think now is the time to look at it and, and to take a good look at it rather than simply responding by removing the money or changing it over to contractual. So I mean, that, so that doesn't change the dollar figure for today.
And, and in three years that I've been supervisor, we had to contractual, which did not work because it was not a person in-house. I think that person in-house is invaluable and it says, it's, it's the first year of And I think it's worked quite well. And I think we can always make those motions in the future if you want to look at it. But I think it's worked quite well this year and I think we should continue along those lines to, we could, someone could make a motion to look at the whole town's way of doing business. And we'd probably end up in no better space than we are right now. I feel that item at least is needed. People have come to me with compliments and then I hear people in the audience saying, remove it. I believe the people in the audience who have said, remove it, have no idea what that person does or that full-time position does on a day-to-day basis because they're not here on a day-to-day basis. So just, just because we have some people saying, look at that, and not others, I think they're coming at it from a lack of knowledge point of view versus a constructive overhead point of view. And I think we're reacting to some negative comments because of personalities. And I don't believe that we need to fight over personalities. You might not like a person, but if the person's doing a good job, then respect that for what it is.
I'm trying not to get into personalities, but we need, this position is unique because it has only been existed for a year. But if we, 2017 budget had 27,000 for contractual, 2018, 48,000. If we left 40,000 in there, those salaries and benefits worth 66,8. So there's a savings of 26,8. So it's, it's a financial decision. And if you're saying that, that, that it is good that he's, that he's here, let's look at it and see if the study bears that out.
As I said, we can have committees for, we can make up committees to look at a lot of things that go on here. And I think this is the wrong time to do, to set up those debates.
Then I'm going to move that we, that we defund the full-time IT position and go to contractual services and leave 40,000 in that line item.
Repeat that again?
I'm going to move that we defund the IT position as a salary position and go to 40,000 in the contractual line.
I would still rather have just a committee look at it, I mean, before we go to that, to that point, I don't know what, what it would hurt.
I agree.
I mean, can we make a motion to explore having a committee and not just vote on
You're making the motions.
But which I would retract if, if you're going to look at it. But if we're just going to, you know, if we're, if we're not going to look at it, then I'll stick with a motion. If we're going to take, make concrete plans to, to examine this issue about that position because it's a new position, then, and that to me is the one thing that separates it from all the other employees in the building. So to me, it doesn't make sense to say that we should be looking at everybody then. I want to know if this one position is, is, is in this size facility and this size of a program is, is worthy of a full-time, of full-time employment. And I'm not talking about whether Marshall is worthy. I'm talking about whether we should be spending that money. But I, if, if we're not going to take steps to look at it, then I'm going to stick with the initial motion. But I agree with Vic. I'd like to see it, I'd like to see it studied.
Like to amend that motion to look at every department in this town?
No.
There's no committee when you grant me.
You're out of order, Mr. Quatrici. If you speak up again, I'll ask you to be moved.
I'll say again, the circumstances surrounding this one, this position are unique because it was just, it was just created.
It was created for a reason, and a good reason, because the contractual was not working. And I don't believe you were here at that.
So can I just make a motion, I'm not real good at phrasing it, but that we form a committee to study, I guess not study, but to look into the full-time IT position we have here in the town of Santa Capols?
Do you need us to retract the other vision?
Do you need us to retract the other... Who was Vic's now? You know Robert's rules. I'm not going to help you with Robert's rules on this one. I mean, you made a motion. It was seconded. That motion was to look at it contractually.
No, the motion was to defund the position.
Oh, the motion was to defund the position. Okay.
I'm saying I'll take that off the table if we agree to do a study.
Uh, you made the motion. You can't take it off the table. The person who seconded it has to take it off the table. Okay, so... So, ask the person if...
Okay. Do you want to withdraw your saying?
Yep.
I withdraw the motion. Now you're on.
Do I need to repeat anything? I don't guess I'm, I'm not familiar with... I make a motion that we form a committee to take a look at the current IT position we have here in the town of Santa Monica Falls.
I'll second that. Is there discussion?
Do we want to put a timeline on it prior to the... Prior to the, prior to the December meeting?
I think that's going to be kind of...
That would be tight.
I will be appointing that committee as such. My role as town supervisor is to appoint those committees. Seeing no more discussion, we'll go to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Nay.
Nay.
Motion passes. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I have one more. I am going, oh, sorry.
I will appoint one after I give a due diligence and thought.
I move that we defund the full-time attorney position.
I move that we go into, I move that we go into executive session.
Greg, this is a financial decision.
No, it's not a financial...
Of course it is.
I make a move to go into executive session immediately. Mr. Jones, I am the town supervisor. I am in charge of this meeting. If you continue to speak out, I will ask you to be removed from this meeting. This is not, it is a meeting of public. It is not a public meeting. I move to go into executive session on purposes to discuss this issue.
Greg, the town law manual says for the medical, financial, credit, or employment history of a particular person or corporation or relating to appointment, promotion, demotion, discipline, or removal. That's the personnel part of it. We're making a financial decision. We would save, if we put in $60,000 in that budget line for contractual, it was, it was 48,000 in 2018, but we've got a lot of stuff on our plate. We'd still save well over 30, almost $31,000 in salary and benefits. This is a financial decision. It's not personnel. I know a person is impacted, but the decision, this should be made right here in front of everybody because it's dollars and cents.
Make a motion to move to executive session. I have a second on that.
A second.
Discussion. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Continue the discussion.
I don't know that there is any more. I mean, those are the numbers. Proposed salary and benefits for 2018...
What's your motion?
I move that we defund the position of full-time attorney.
My concern, if we go this way, uh, there's a lot of irons in the fire right now. I mean, uh, we all get emails on what he's handling. Right now, we're walking through a vast number of minefields.
But the, the big... No, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
No, my, my question is, what's our plan B? What do we have?
Well, he would still be an employee until the end of December, I assume, unless he chose to, to, to go elsewhere. Um, and that gives us that amount of time to find a, an attorney or a, or a law firm. There are many out there who do this on a regular, on a regular basis. I'm not recommending Boil and Co., for instance, because they're, they're involved in the landfill for us, but I know for a fact that they do that. And, and, you know, all over, all over western New York, they supply an attorney for the, for the town. We would go back to attorney for the town status rather than town attorney. And, and, and the, you know, the, the bigger issues that, that you're discussing, the biggest of those, we've, we've farmed them all out to, to outside counsel.
Right. And which I'm sure Boil and Co. or whoever else we get, I mean, the attorney that would come down here on a monthly basis wouldn't be the same one that would be litigating for environmental issues or the other parts of the...
I don't know for a fact, but I mean, I assume we could make that, we could make that a, a condition.
Yeah.
That's, that's assuming we went to Boil and Co. anyway.
Right. But if we did, I'm sure that firm would say, "Okay, now I like the one we were involved in. I don't believe we were here at the time, but we had one firm and they had to pass it off to somebody else or another part of it, and that wound up costing us." So, I mean, I, I don't know, I don't know if this is better, worse, or what. I just know that we're in a world of hurt right now with everything coming at us. I don't know where we would stand.
You know, I, I've been sitting here thinking and I'm going to rule this motion out of order. And that's the chairman's rule and I have a... I can do that. So, I'm going to rule this motion out of order because I believe that you've discussed this with at least two other board members. And that's akin to having a quorum outside this board room.
I have never talked with, with two of the two together.
I will, I will.
Really?
Rule this out of order. I am ruling this out of order and it's not germane to tonight's discussion.
Could I just have the, the board member restate that, please?
I, I never...
Never?
Have to discuss this issue with them together. I, I, we go to great lengths to avoid...
That wasn't a question. That wasn't a question. Have you discussed this with two other board members at the same time? Yes or no?
No.
That's your, that's your answer? Thank you.
Motion's out of order. That's, and I'm making that ruling as the chairperson. Is there any discussion? I'll allow the discussion on the preliminary budget. I'll say something, that this budget increases taxes. Keeps the taxes about the same. But if we don't find out where we're going to get funding sources, we are lost for the future. And with members of this board sitting on other boards who want to belittle businesses, want to belittle economic development in this town, I don't know where we're going to get the money because I don't know where we're going to get the economic development from. And so, I made some cuts, hard cuts. People put those cuts back in. This is one when we have to make the hard decisions. We have many lawsuits that are going to cost us hundreds of thousands of dollars. And we turned down $100 million. I cannot vote for this budget. Our first role as councilmen, as supervisors, as a supervisor, is the financial responsibility of this town. We are not acting in for the best financial interest of this town by enacting this budget tonight. We do not know where our income that we have been dependent on for the last 20 years is coming from. I'm concerned about that. And I will be voting no on this budget.
Uh, with that being said, I believe right now we have two or three businesses that are suing us for their tax increases, I believe. Am I correct, Councilor?
You are.
And, uh, because of the tax hike that they received, I, I, I'm, I can't vote for it either if we're looking for a vote.
We have to vote for it by, when's the 20th? Again, next Tuesday?
Next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday. So... Uh... There's a motion on the floor and there's a second. So, I, I presume unless the person pulls a second, it's, it's going to be voted on tonight. So...
And I believe it should be voted on tonight. We've gone through everything. It's fired $100 million.
Yes.
It could be very helpful. In the last 20 years, you said we've been getting money from them. There's other towns in the area that are not getting money from the landfill and they're surviving by getting grants or whatever they gotta do, bonding. We'll have to do the same thing.
And their taxes are higher.
Not as high as they are right now. Still a lot lower than, I think Dave said there's a $22,000, or $22,000 a thousand in Geneva. One moves 24. We're at 871. We're still a lot lower than towns in the area.
A man came to my office the other day. He's a veteran. He has problems seeing. He has to sell his house. He had to take a loan for his taxes this year. That's a shame. Many people come to me in my office each and every day and tell me the same story. They cannot afford the high taxes in Santa Monica Falls. There's a woman in this audience who stood up and said, "We do not look at the incomes of people in this town. This is a working-class community. We cannot afford the taxes that are we, we are pushing on the people in this community. We simply cannot without income from other sources." Period.
Some of these faint people that are saying this, I remember when the village was here, they were paying $18, $1,000. And they're at 871,000, maybe?
Using the, the landfill revenue to keep taxes low is what's created this problem. And, and, and to, in my mind, you're trying to go right down that same road again. We've got a reasonable budget. If the landfill money resumes, which it should, if they're going to keep bringing garbage, then that gives us the money to handle our infrastructure needs. We would be in very, very good shape indeed by the time the landfill closes in 2025. There's 22, 23 million between now and then.
I tend to disagree with you, Mr. Avery, on that, but I've stated...
Those were your words. You said we've got, we've got a $3 million bond and then you said we've got 10 million more out there and projects we need to fund.
No, I've, I've, I've stated my reasons at other public forums. You're well aware of them. Don't try to put words in my mouth. I'm just an angry...
They're your words, Greg.
We have many infrastructure problems to complete that we wouldn't have to borrow for. There's a motion on the floor. I had a second. Is there any more discussion?
Is the motion, what is the motion?
Motion is to adopt the budget?
Yes, ma'am.
What, no, we didn't have a motion.
Well, just have, it made sense to talk about the attorney today and solve that. It's, it's not, it's not going to be resolved apparently today. If we need to pass the budget today, we'll pass it, but that's, it's gonna, it's gonna continue.
Yes, it is. Yes, it is.
All in favor of the preliminary budget as, as written, as it's discussed tonight, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Signify by saying nay. Nay. Could you take a roll call, Mrs. Greer?
Sure. Lou Farah?
No.
David Delanis?
Yes.
Greg Ganzaro?
No.
Doug Avery?
Yes.
Liparata?
Yes.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.